To our regular school committee meeting of September 25th, 2013. First order of business apart from saying thank you all for coming, we're glad to have you here, will be our roll call and everyone's present, Linda, except Mrs. Carroll cannot make it, she had a last minute personal issue. Okay, and our next item would be the items of approval by consensus from Superintendent Benton.
Good evening, everyone. I have three items on the agenda for consent agenda, approval of the minutes of September 11th regular session, approval of field trips, middle school June 2014 to Washington DC, and middle school strings, May 29th and 30th at Lake George, and lastly, one warrant payroll for nine eleven thirteen. Easy one tonight.
It is easy tonight. So I entertain a motion for items number one and number two on the consent agenda, approval of minutes and approval of field trips. Mrs. Burns?
Still moved.
Do we have a second? Mr. Moulis, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. And then I'd accept a motion for the acceptance of the warrant for the payroll. Mr. Moulis?
Motion to accept a warrant for payroll for nine eleven, 2013.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Dr. Quick, all those in favor? Five in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Kane. Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
First item under our superintendent's report is this very special salute to three retirees whose combined years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools is eighty-seven years. That's a lot for three people.
Wow.
Tonight, we're going to salute three special people, and in honor of all of them, we have a special performance by the senior strings attached members who have come to do a special tribute, and I'd like to invite them up right now. It's not often that we have entertainment for our school.
Next meeting will be karaoke.
This is my gift to Ward Dillmore. One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you all very much. Before you leave, I know that there's some of you in the group that also had Mrs. Graham as a teacher in kindergarten. Who had Mrs. Graham as a teacher? I know there's someone in the group. There we go, yes. Did anybody have Mrs. Crowley? I don't know if there's anybody who had Mrs. Crowley at Woburn Street.
Nope. There's a little raisin.
Oh, we got one, all right, all right. Well, thank you all very much, and this sermon is hiding someplace. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, since they let it off, the first person we're going to honor is Mr. Dillmore. Ward Dillmore has been with the Wilmington Public Schools for twenty-six years. When one says strings attached, one also says Ward Dillmore because they're synonymous. Before I came to Wilmington, and this is a true story, my husband used to say to me, what are these bumper stickers, you know, all around that I always see about strings attached? And I had no clue until I walked into the Wilmington Public Schools and learned and met Ward Dillmore, who was a very, very special, special, special educator. Now, some of you know that I'm a real proponent of the arts, and it's important to me that our schools not only have opportunities for students on the playing fields, but also in the music room and in the art room. And Ward impressed me from the very first day that I met him that his focus was not so much on music as it was on his students. Because in my opinion, Ward believed that if he could reach the students, then they would learn the music. And Ward has put together a program that is incomparable to anything else in the state of Massachusetts that I know of. It's a program that has put Wilmington on the map in more ways than one, and we will never forget your contributions to the Wilmington Public Schools. Please come up and accept the school committees. Our next one to read is a first grade teacher, Diane Crowley, who's given eighteen years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. She began as a long-term substitute, was an educational tutor, and then ended up as a first grade teacher at Woburn Street School. Having been a first grade teacher, I know the importance of that grade because it's the first grade teacher that gets to see the sparkle in the eye of the student when they all of a sudden discover that they can read. And any first grade teacher remembers the first time that their first student had that sparkle, and every year, they look for that sparkle in their students, and they give them the gift of teaching them to read. Diane, on behalf of everyone in Wilmington Public Schools, thank you for your gift to all of us. And of course, we all know, there was a book written about it, that everything we learned, we learned in kindergarten. And that is so true. Because we learned how to get along with people, we learned how to stand in line, how to wait, we learned what it was like to go through the cafeteria line, and we learned all about what it was to explore and discover new things. And how many of us remember getting all dirty with the finger paints that were used in kindergarten. Vida Graham has been with the Wilmington Public Schools for thirty-three years. She began as a kindergarten teacher at St. Dorothy's, and then was at Shashin in Wildwood and ended up at Bellwell. And when I was walking over here this evening, Anthony Fury stopped me and said, Vida Graham cannot retire. And I said, why is that? He said, well, I was in her first kindergarten class, and I was hoping for my daughter to have her, who's going to be going to kindergarten in two more years. I'm sorry, Anthony, I'm not going to be able to grant you that wish, but we want to thank Vida for all that she has given to the Wilmington Public Schools. Thank you, Vida. So we thank you all for honoring our retirees this evening. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the evening or go home and enjoy your spouses. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So nice.
Kate's taking a picture for me.
Oh, okay. Should you be in it?
No, no, just in front of me.
If anyone wants to close that window, feel free.
Are you cold?
Nobody thinks people are cold. That's all right.
I think it's cold.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the personnel report, and since last we met, we had some employees leave, and I have the list of replacements as well.
Thank you.
Our third item on the agenda is the elementary, excuse me, the English Language Arts Common Core Curriculum Maps for six through twelve. And this evening, we're joined by Dr. Mackless.
I didn't see her.
Who is here to answer any questions. I'd like to invite you up to the table. As you all know, the Massachusetts has adopted the Common Core standards, and we are now in the throes of implementing, and Dr. Mackless has worked very hard with the six through twelve teachers and helping us move towards the Common Core. If you could acknowledge her, maybe she could tell us a little bit about what's in the packet.
Good evening, Dr. Mackless. We're very happy to have you with us tonight.
Thank you so much. I'm hoping, can you hear me? Is this okay? I, first of all, thank you for inviting me, and we started off the year, I think, with the maps really grew out of a commitment towards the Common Core and merging the Common Core with writing standards. So we began with a unified effort, six through eight, nine through twelve, with a commitment towards the summer reading. So at the middle school, six through eight, and I think many of you probably have had an opportunity, if you haven't, to read RJ Palacio's book, Wonder. And right now, as we speak, students are in the throes of beginning their writing prompts to begin, kind of pushing off the school year with attending to all the standards.
Can I stop you right there?
Yep.
In case anyone hasn't read, I just finished reading it two nights ago, and at the last minute, I just, the phone was ringing, they were knocking on my door, I could not put it down. It is, I think, for everything we're doing with bullying and with being kind in school and everything, and the amount of lessons that you could get out of that book, I just want to congratulate you on choosing that book. It was outstanding, and I, anybody on the school committee would really, it would be so important to read because I feel like it ties together everything that the superintendent has been trying to bring us, bring us together with, and it's just, I just cried. So, but it wasn't a sad cry.
No.
Because it's a very hopeful book.
I have to say, I read it with my fifth grader, as I would hope, and I have to, just the, in the nature of how it's written, and it is, I gotta say, it was tough for me. My children don't understand it as much as in reading this journey of this one child. It did tear me up because I know exactly what that looks like and what that feels like, and it's, I've recommended, recommended it to other people as well. I agree with Mrs. Kane, it's, it was a very wonderful book. I enjoy reading it.
I'm so glad, and I think, I think the response that I'm hearing from students, from teachers, from parents, has all been really positive. And from a, from a teaching perspective, I think the fact that she wove in so many narrative voices, it kind of sets the prelude for really learning how to read and write and understand what narrative voice means. And I think that the message, I think it was designed to be a book that families would read together to talk about, and I think, really, at the, at the middle school, it sets a springboard up for many of the thematic things that will go on all year long. And each month, all students, six through eight, will be doing monthly journal entries tied to the precepts in the book that one of the authors, that the teacher in the book has for each of the students to think about and reflect on. And it's really, it's, I think, a nice way to make reading authentic, meaningful, as well as a springboard for further discussion.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but thank you.
In nine through twelve, we had a very exciting beginning of the year. Thank you again towards this commitment, towards summer reading. Nine through twelve looked at the work by Jay Atkinson, and he came and he spoke to two different groups of students, large groups of students, and I think the, where he was warmly received by the Wilmington community. And I think that what came out of both presentations was how he wrote the books, why he wrote the books, as well as his love of writing. He shared many anecdotes with the students, and they are, just like the middle school students, right in the throes of writing summer response pieces that are rich, that are detailed, that are really aligned with the Common Core, and will serve as a springboard for later discussion. So I think, I think all in all, the discussions that I've had the opportunity to be part of in classrooms have enriched teachers, although maybe not loving aspects of his book, understand the richness of the language and the intent of the author to come and speak. So it's been, again, a powerful piece, plus the ice time kind of tied along with the hockey theme here, and even those students that maybe are not sports fanatics were able to resonate with the nostalgia piece in that book. Again, very, very rich reads, and we're kind of interjecting each quarter. We'll be looking at how we can respond through journals, through responses, through prompts. The idea is to infuse writing, really, across, across the board. This was a huge commitment, I thank both the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, for really supporting me on this because we really wanted to make it something authentic and something that the kids saw value in. We're competing with all the digital devices and all the distractions out there, and to make it meaningful and to kind of connect it to personal experiences is really important.
Can I just add that I was able to attend the freshman sophomore presentation, and I, first of all, want to congratulate all the students because they were an incredible audience.
Incredible.
And the week that he was here was the week of the very, very hot weather, and people, I mean, they, they did a great job. I was amazed at the depth of the questions that the students asked, and at the end, the students who had extra questions were able to stay and go up and see Jay, and there were three girls standing together, and I asked them about the book, and one of the students said, I just loved this book, and I have to tell him. And I said, tell me why. And she said, well, first of all, I'm a hockey player, and I could identify with him. But second of all, I could, I really appreciated how he incorporated his son in the story. And I thought it was, I mean, it was really amazing to hear what, what students had to say, so. I know that they were difficult books to read. I know that some felt it wasn't the right choice after being in those assemblies. I can say I'm perfectly pleased with what came out of it because, and also, students had, some of them had some of their writing that they want, to show him.
Oh, that's neat.
That they were going to be turning in on this story, that they wanted his opinion. And it was great to see him interacting with them, and the second time, he actually brought the police officer.
Yes, that was, actually, the second book was even, I would say, it was a very difficult read because, again, it was moving back and forward in time, and the texts and the, just kind of the, the whole way it flowed. The students, I think, as a whole, some of the teachers, found it difficult reading. And we posed him with questions with regard to that, but he felt that it was very important to bring the title character of the book, so he brought Joe McCain Jr. to the actual assembly. And there were many stories that were shared. Again, it was an incredible audience. We had all eleventh and twelfth graders, there's how many of them, and you could have heard a pin drop. They were amazed, and he started out by saying how many hours he spent with transcripts in the writing piece, and more importantly, I think that Jay's message across the board was, he was a poor kid from Methuen, he wasn't that great in school, he understood a teacher took interest in him and in his abilities to write, and his message was, you can do this, anybody can do this, you find that something that you're really good at, and you work hard, you develop a passion, and I think that that came through loud and clear. And what happened as a result of this was, at the end of that presentation, there must have been a line wrapped with students asking both him and Joe McCain Jr. questions, and it was just an incredible presence. I know, I know Dr. Burnham was there to see a portion of it, and it really was, it was a large group, it was, at the end of the day, and they were incredible. So.
And I did notice on your, in the paperwork, everybody's gearing towards that writing component, the six plus one traits.
Yes.
We're moving towards that. No matter what content they are.
Across, across the board. We're using that as the framework. We're looking at that as a common language so that we can really talk about writing in writing instruction. I mean, even from, we're going to be working on it from K on up. So, in other words, we're, we're comfortable with working through that, and there will be professional development along those lines. We, the teachers had training last year, the middle school and the high school, and we're kind of moving, moving in a downward progressive fashion, and what I see coming out is, is really exciting. If you were to go into some of the sixth grade classes, and you can see a couple of the teachers have actual plot charts and the writing and drawings on the, on the actual walls in there, and it's just incredible. I mean, the language that they're already using to describe pieces of it is so powerful, so.
I bring it up because I know that that was one of the things that we tried to do in my school, but what happened was, it was kind of mishmash. This is the first time I've seen a commitment, school-wide, that is really a commitment, and I'm all for that, and I think that's, that's a great thing that everybody's working together like that. And we've said this before with the testing, they're not just, the content of the tests a lot of times are science, social studies, they're not English content, very little literature or literary content in the tests these kids are taking. So it's so important that the, I noticed your other part was the nonfiction that you got into the, the high school.
Yes.
Really important.
And I think that we're also working on the development of kind of school-wide rubrics so that, that that's also an important component, and we're sharing it out amongst the disciplines. So again, we're tying everything together and making it collaborative, meaningful, and I think that the students will have the actual language provided through the feedback with teachers to really understand which areas in their writing development to work on, how to, how to improve, and, and just how to make things better and more authentic. But again, I could not have done it without the support of, of the district, and I think that the commitment from both Dr. Burnham and Mrs. Benton has been incredible. They've been very supportive. I'm very pushy, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I have one, no, I have one question before you go, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is, this is just tongue-in-cheek.
Yeah.
I had gone through all of the curriculum that you did and the books that you planned out for the different grade levels.
Yes.
And I noticed that we no longer read Charles Dickens.
Oh, no, we do.
Oh, we do? Did I miss him?
We do. You must have missed him, A Christmas Carol is right there in the middle of seventy.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you.
We would never give up Charles Dickens. And he's, and he is auxiliary texts at the high school. I would never give up Dickens.
Oh, excellent. I was just being facetious because some people really don't give a, it was hard to teach Charles Dickens, I have to say.
No, we would never.
But it was so rewarding.
No, in fact, we have a whole unit, a Common Core unit, on Victorian England and tying it in with industrialization. We would never forget Dickens.
Now, see, the teachers, when you're worried about how to put things together for people to be working on, co-curricle, co-
Victorian England.
Oh, it's in tiny, though, I missed, I did.
Sorry.
I was so overwhelmed by wonder, and Brian's songs on the other side of it, that brought back memories. Oh, my God. But anyway, I see, based on what's happening with you in the English department, I see the, everything that we were trying to do, like bring everything together, I see it happening through this, and I really just have to congratulate you on, all of you, on doing this. It's really excellent work.
Well, you know, we're lucky because we also have wonderful administrative support. Kristi McMenamin and certainly Linda Peters here make things, as well as the assistant principals, have made my job much easier, and I think that we have a lot of, the teachers want this. I mean, it's coming up from work that they've done, from curriculum work that Kate Burnham has helped put together as well, so that they're, you know, we have, we have identified teacher leaders, people who really want to take the charge, move forward with the Common Core, so it's, it's, it's a collaborative effort. It's, I'm just, I'm just the window dressing on top, but they're really doing the hard work.
You came at the right time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The next is the report, our district accountability report. As you all know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed released a 2013 district and school accountability data for each of the schools as well as the district, and as you can see in the report, we are all Level II schools. You will see, next meeting, we're doing the district-wide goals and the school improvement goals for the district, and we're working very hard on creating goals that will respond to this report and the MCAS results, which we'll report at the next meeting. It's very interesting, and I will just say editorially, if you look at the list in the Globe of all this, the Level One schools, most of them are Singleton schools. Most of them are charter schools, which are schools with select populations, so, you know, it's much easier to be a Level One district when there's only two hundred students in your district.
Dr. Quick.
I'm sorry, you said a Singleton school?
Yes.
I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
So we're, we're a district, so we're rated on 3,658 students. Charter school has, could have seventy students, it could have two hundred students, a vocational school, so they're not, they're smaller population schools. We're select, you know, charter schools and vocational schools can uninvite students and cannot accept students. We accept all, and I think that says something. Sure, we'd like to be Level One, we will, that'll be our goal for next year. More importantly, I, you'll see in our goals, it's more about moving students in the, from proficient to advanced. That's, that's what my goal is. And the writing goal is to, will support Dr. Mackless's work around open-ended response questions. And our culture goal is around creating a data culture so that we're really going to be focusing, I'm just giving you a preview of our next meeting, but we're excited about it. Jen White has turned the district upside down with her background in data and helping people focus on what really is important and how we dissect data and how we move students along, so we'll be talking about that at the next meeting.
Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Could I, there's also an additional detail piece coming out for the next meeting regarding MCAS with regards to where our students scored, any to do with that?
Yeah.
That'll be a part of that?
That's next, next, next meeting.
All right.
Yes.
Do we have any other, any questions? The only thing I would say is- The only thing I would say is when you start to read through this report and it is so complicated and you have to wonder who takes the time to do this, these mathematical calculations and what is their point? I don't see at the end where they tell you what the point is.
Thank you. Cause I, I got the same feeling. I didn't know if it was just me trying to apply the new, um, assessment tools, you know, with the PPI and, um, how you've gone away from the AYP, annual year progress into a different thing. And I'm, I'm just trying to scale myself as applying what each piece means to the data we received. And what does that mean? And I think hopefully at the next meeting, the more detailed clarification will probably help me further along with the understanding.
Dr. Quick.
To really simplify it, I mean, because I, I feel the exact same way. I honestly would love to have an accountability report for dummies because that's really what I, I feel like, you know, for people like us who don't really, you know, to me, I'm looking at this, this looks, you know, it's, it's overwhelming. So I would love something like that. And I hate to dummy it down, but really.
This really needs to be in the context of the MCAS results. Uh, the reason I re, uh, put it in this packet is they, was released publicly last week, so I wanted you all to have it.
Thank you.
And MCAS results will be mailed home on Monday. What maybe?
We may be lucky enough to get them out late Friday afternoon.
Okay, or late Friday.
Oh, my.
So, thank you, Kate, for your work on that.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Wilmington was, um, chosen to participate in a survey as part of the Massachusetts State Performance Plan, the Annual Performance Report Data Collection Activities. It's a federal requirement that requires each state to provide baseline data and establish performance targets and outline improvement activities that respond to 20 indicators identified by the Federal Office of Special Education Programs. We were chosen, uh, to be surveyed on Indicator Eight, which is parent involvement. And I attached the report, um, to your packet. We had, um, 360 surveys received, uh, 209 of students in general ed and 51 parents of students with disabilities. And it, it's an interesting report. Um, I, I found it fascinating. This one was easier to understand than the, uh, accounts. The team chairs and Mrs. Hood are gonna use this data for one of their, um, goals this year. And, um, I, I think it's, provides valuable information to all of us on how we're doing.
I noticed one of them, I always get, find it amusing that we can use some information one way, but we can't use it another way. But like on page five, my child's school connects families to other families that can provide information and mutual support. But there's privacy issues and there's privacy laws. And it's one thing for the parents to get together or maybe the PAC to help them, but for the school officially to do that, the school can't, I, I don't see how that can be done. So sometimes I think we have to be careful of what the question's asking, what they're saying. And I may be way off base on this and maybe there is a way to do it, but it seems to me you're getting into, um, personal issues and that, that kind of a question. But so I found these were fascinating. And the, the, were you happy with the, um, response, that number of people who responded to it?
Yes, yes.
I thought that was excellent. Mrs. Burns.
Um, I think the only, um, the only thing the district can afford parents is through the CPAC and all the other PACs. That's the only measure that they, they can do. And then by doing so, they can get additional information on a variety of different topics and rights. But I had one quick question. Does this have anything to do with the, uh, the audit that was done?
No.
It has nothing to do with it?
Totally separate. The audit was state, this is federal.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So, thank you.
And the last report is the ACT report, which is the college readiness assessment. It, it, it's a curriculum standard-based educational and career planning tool that, um, seniors are welcome to take. It's, was taken on English composition, algebra, social sciences, biology. And the district results, the, um, as you can see, the, um, in all areas, this Wilmington performed better than the state and we have gone up. I'd love to see more students take the test, but I think it's just one more test, so kids don't wanna do it.
How many students participated?
Fifty-nine.
Oh, just 50? Okay, I didn't know that was.
I still think we have a high rate of participation. I think that's a lot, 59.
Just as a, a side note, um, last year you approved the administration of the PSAT to all juniors on our tab, but actually it's, we're using the revenue. Uh, we had over 230 students signed up for it. 200 out of the 268.
Wow, that's great.
Juniors, uh, the day before with the last day had, um, signed up for it. And they're doing it on a Saturday. So that is amazing and very excited by those numbers.
That's great.
A lot of positive, um, feedback from parents and students who are funny because, "Mrs. Benton, you're paying for the, um, for our PSATs, is that true?" Yeah, we're gonna do that. So I, I think it's, 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 we're going to, I'm hoping that you will see down the road a trend towards more students getting involved in college preparedness and readiness in their junior year.
Right, yeah.
That's good news.
Okay. Okay. We're on to old business, the approval of the revised anti-bullying policy.
And I think, second reading, we can approve it this evening?
Does anyone have any questions or comments on it?
Just for the public, um, the, the reason why we're doing this policy is that there was a, uh, law enacted this summer that adds, excuse me, members of school staff, including but not limited to educator, administrator, school nurse, cafeteria worker, custodian, bus driver, athletic coach, advisor to an extracurricular activity or paraprofessional into the anti-bullying policy.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the revised anti-bullying policy. Mrs. Bosch.
I make a motion to approve the revised anti-bullying policy.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Burns? All those in favor? Unanimously. Okay. Um, our next item of business is, um, new business, NetTexts.
I'd like to invite, um, our OIT Director, Mr. Ellis, up to the table. Uh, last year, if you'll recall, uh, when we're talking about, um, textbooks and the cost of textbooks and, and open source, I had mentioned that, um, Dr. Conti, the superintendent in Burlington, was piloting an, um, an app called NextText. And his teachers were working to develop curricula in place of textbooks. The company had, um, provided, uh, full tech support as part of the, um, the project at Burlington High. And, um, Dr. Conti invited Andover and Wilmington to participate this year. Uh, the participation will, um, include someone from Net, NetText coming to Wilmington and sitting with the teachers and actually helping them develop. And our whole goal is to be able to, um, develop courses that the three communities can share. Mr. Ellis is gonna talk to you a little bit about what the app is.
So, uh, basically it's, it's kind of an interactive textbook. It has, you, you kind, you kind of interface it as if it's a, kind of like a library. And the way the materials are kind of, are laid out, it's, it's very visual and it's easy to access. The, the application provides for, um, the students to get materials that other, other teachers have worked in the NetText and built kind of textbook materials. And, uh, those are offered to students much like, uh, like our, our virtual high school is. And our teachers would build, um, lesson plans, um, uh, chapters of maybe a, an ongoing book that a bunch of biology teachers around the country are working to create in NetText. And, uh, and the students would benefit from that. There's, um, the, different materials in there, different kinds of media, videos, uh, PowerPoints, documents, um, uh, audio, anything that, um, really hits home for whatever they're trying to teach in all the different subjects. So we're trying to move towards this as kind of a pilot for, for, yeah.
Why we're in front of you this evening is we want, we'd like to do a pilot, uh, bring your own device for the teachers that have signed up to do the work. And we have three?
We have three at the moment.
Three, three teachers. A, a middle school reading teacher and high school social studies teacher and high school English. Chris Phillips is English, yeah, English teacher. It's with, now with the wireless capabilities at the middle school would make it easier. So for students who, you know, didn't have an e-reader or, uh, iPad, we, we have netbooks that they utilize.
Sure. Yeah. But, uh, just to take advantage of all the infrastructure we now, now have in place for the students to have access to all this material.
So who's bringing their own device? The students or the teachers?
Uh, either. Both. The, the materials would be available to the, the teachers on, you know, on their regular computer and that kind of thing. Um, and for the students to read inside class and outside of class at home on whatever device they have.
This is the next step. So once the teachers get to know what they're, um, they're gonna be teaching, what, in the areas and the lessons, they put the lessons together, then the, okay.
Yes, yes.
Then the students will come and bring their own device.
Yes, that, this will take a few months. Isn't gonna happen tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'll, yeah. It's, it'll, it'll be a project, but, you know, it'll get our feet wet in the, um, digital textbook.
Right, okay. Mrs. Burns?
With, um, only, right now, three teachers signed up, what, will that, will it potentially just be piloted in three classrooms? One at the middle school and two in the high school? Is that what you're thinking?
Just for this year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we, are you looking for more teachers to participate?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get more people in.
Eventually, I think once it gets started.
Yes.
Because once Wilmington and Andover and Burlington get together, the word's gonna spread.
Yeah.
Very good.
And it's exciting, I mean, I'm really honored and excited to be part of this because we all know how heavy textbooks are. And we know, I'll know how out of date they become so quickly. So I would love to see an app, I mean, this seems to be a great avenue for replacing out-of-date textbooks. It'll be much cheaper.
Mr. Booth.
So all the students in those classes will have access to a device, whether they bring it in themselves or the school supplies it.
Yes. I also have to say, I think it's a, a great opportunity to, um, for differentiated learners to access curriculum with, with the audio piece and the visuals. I think that's just another added, added bonus to those students who rely heavily on those factors to get through curriculum.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I wouldn't have one of those students, yeah.
Dr. Quick?
And as Mrs. Benton knows, I, this is, I saw this, I was like, woo-hoo! Because literally my daughter started, you know, she's in fifth grade now and I was appalled at the size of the weight. I weighed her backpack and she's yelling at me because I'm taking stuff out of her backpack and like, I'm sorry. And, and, you know, and I ended up contacting the teacher to say, is there another way we can do this? Because these textbooks are getting, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot. And, and not only that, but like you said, I mean, there's all these different components. And you're absolutely right, textbooks are absolutely static. They have a very short, when you think about it, sho- short shelf life because things change. And I think this is a great transition, hopefully to like a one-to-one program for, for all. So.
I am getting a lot of requests from parents. I have not said yes, because that will have to be up to the school committee, um, of asking why their children can't bring in their own e-readers or devices if they're, you know, in an English class in the middle school reading, you know, a, a book, why, why do they have to bring in the textbook? Why can't they bring in their e-readers? So that's probably gonna be coming forward before all of you at some point.
Okay. Mrs. Bosch?
So the assumption is, so, so for kids who don't have their own device that we'll let them use, what if they don't have a device at home and that's their textbook? Would they, they can't, can they bring that home? Oh, they're gonna allow them to bring?
Yeah, during this pilot time, we'll, we'll have, that'll be fine. I'm not worried about that. When we, if we were to, you know, buy devices on a much larger scale, um, you know, that, then we'd have to, you know, provide for some kind of insurance plan and all that kind of.
I, I think that some people might not have a device, but I think most people do have a, you know, a big computer at home.
Oh, well, this, what I will say about the, the NetText and, and these kind of textbook-based things, uh, the, with NetText, you go to the, you know, to the, the whatever portion you wanna download and, and you download that whole section to the device. So then it sits on the device and you can click around, you don't have to worry about Wi-Fi access. So they, they can get it all when they're in school and then bring it home and then not have to worry about having access anymore.
It's like a portable textbook.
It, it is. It's a portable textbook. And this stuff can get updated daily, you know, so it never goes out of date.
Have we had any, um, issues with the, um, high school with, for instance, if you lay down your book in the bathroom, you forget to go back and get it and you go back? Have we had issues with losing them or, um, having problems with keeping track of their netbooks or whatever? They bring their own device? Has there been a problem there at all?
We haven't had any, any problem with that yet, but.
Real textbooks, yes.
Real textbooks, right.
But they have to pay for them.
Yes, yeah.
We have a lost textbook that comes.
The, the, uh, you know, we, we will encounter that some, well, the, the idea, we're trying to circumnavigate that by, by having to bring your own device. So, I mean, ultimately the, the student would bring in their own device and they'd be responsible for it. And the majority of students would have their own device, so, you know, we, we handle the.
I think you're right, they do.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm being pulled here slowly but surely, but they're everywhere, those devices.
Yeah, we just have to make sure that they use them responsibly and respectfully.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? So you just need a, you don't need a motion?
I need your consensus that we can go forward with the pilot.
Yes.
CYOD. Thank you.
Do you have a consent?
Do you have any motion?
No motion for that? Do you want a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't know if.
Yeah, let's have a motion so it's recorded.
Okay. So we don't forget we did it. Dr. Quick?
Um, I move that we go forward per Dr. Benton's request with NetText pilot.
Do we have a second? Uh, Mrs. Bosch? All those in favor? Unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Neil.
I have, um, two more items, um, that came forward. We just got second notice. The school committee needs to appoint an official delegate to the, uh, conference down in Hyannis. And we need to get this into them.
The, um, and speaking with Mrs. Burns today, she was so very gracious to say, because it is at four o'clock on Friday afternoon apparently, but, um, that she would be our delegate again this year.
If nobody has any.
Does anyone want to fight her for it?
Stop being jealous.
So we will, um, Mrs. Burns will be our delegate. That'd be great.
Thank you. Do you have an option or not?
Looking at Mrs., no, do we, do we need to put in alternate?
Over here.
Okay, okay. All right.
Something happens last night. Whether or not I wanna go come home is another story.
All right, I will, I will mail that in tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, and lastly, uh, Mrs. Burns had brought up a few weeks ago, the possibility of developing a, a Dropbox for school committee for their, um, all the materials that you usually receive hard copies of. And, um, Mr. Ellis and my assistant and, and Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Burns and I met to discuss the possibility of piloting this. It would, um, actually be, we'd start off with, um, creating a Dropbox for the school committee members. And you could either opt in if you'd rather receive your material electronically or opt out if you'd rather receive it hard copy. And then after the meetings, we, once, um, we've had the public meeting, we would then, um, store this information on the website for the public to, to see. Uh, we can, we are gonna investigate whether we can get you netbooks for meetings so that investigate whether we can get you netbooks for meetings so that we can go really paperless. But as April pointed out, my assistant pointed out this morning, we prepare twenty-four packets for every school committee meeting because all of the administrators get them. So having them as part of the Dropbox, we can eliminate all of their packets. They can get theirs electronically. So what we would like to do is, Neil, we'll send you out an email inviting them to participate. And if you sign up for it, then you can download the Dropbox on your computer.
Can we bring a device in?
Yes, yes, yes.
Dr. Quick?
Is there any little training for the Dropbox? Because I've tried that and I had trouble with it in the past. I may just be technologically backwards.
There's a lot of training documents and video tutorials on Dropbox website.
Okay, great.
And I actually started making up an email for, for the school committee, and I included the links to those.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
And if you have any problem, call me.
You guys call me.
Neil's going to be ringing off the hook, Neil, between.
Neil's been doing video directions for Aspen and they've been a real success, so maybe he can do one for Dropbox.
Sure.
If I can do it, anybody can do it.
Dropbox for Dummies number two.
There you go. That'd be my next book.
Our second book tonight. I think it's good, though. We're willing to try it, so I think that's, that's important. Any other questions?
Thank you for saving the tree.
Yes. Okay. I think we'll start and we'll go through, I think we've had some meetings since we met last time. So, Mrs. Burns, did you have?
There's just a couple of things that, from our meeting today, and from what Mike Gilbert spoke of last week, regarding charting the course, for those members who haven't yet taken their eight hours of charting the course that MASC in the state requires, I talked to Mike Gilbert. You have the option of attending the conference Friday and Saturday to get your eight hours, which would meet the requirement. Also, they're planning charting the course in January. They're still hammering out locations and dates, but that'll be the first charting the course after conference. And there'll be another one sometime in the spring, which they're still working on. And with regards to the Dropbox piece and bringing personal electronic devices to our meetings, Mike Gilbert stated that as long as we're accessing materials and comprising our own notes, that that's not, well, the notes, our notes, personal notes are not open to public meeting laws. Any correspondence or anything from that, anything other than that would, could fall under open meeting and would be public record. So, subject to public record laws is basically how he stated that. I had my notes at home and I forgot to bring them, but, so that's pretty much, with a lot of electronic devices being used in our door and our meeting, it's possible, but you just have to be wary with how you use them, so.
Good, thank you. Right. And we have an invitation, I believe?
I, I, well, we have, yes, absolutely. So I have a couple of things. So we had our WEF meeting last Tuesday and a couple of things that we have going on. And I believe every school committee member got my invite to the October eighth meeting. I really hope everybody comes because it's our favorite meeting of the year where we have our, we've invited our curriculum grant award winners and our, the educator exploration grant award winners to present how they basically use the grant money that, that the educational foundation has given them. And it's, it's just a great way to motivate and see where all the wonderful fundraising efforts have gone to. So please, if you haven't RSVP'd, please do so at your earliest convenience. And then the other thing I wanted to mention for the WEF is that we have our, again, once again, our annual Halloween Walk for WEF will be October thirty-first for all the kids one through eight. And, and I believe everything, the sheets have gone home, the donor sheets have gone home to all the kids, so.
Monday, they're going home.
I think my daughter already got hers.
She did?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She already got hers. So please, no donation is too small. And again, it helps to help the educational foundation provide grants, like the curriculum grants and the educator exploration grant, and the STEM fair, which has been for two years now, a great, a wonderful event. So that was for the WEF. And then today, I had my health and wellness committee meeting. And just a couple of things to take away from that one, I, some interesting information. We had a presentation from Dan Stewart, who is a member of the Brain Injury Association. And he gave us some really great information of different programs that they provide regarding safety risks, injury risks for brain injuries. And the other interesting tidbit was that Mrs. Laura Stinson had mentioned was that they're changing the Presidential Fitness Award to something called Fitness Gram. And it's going to, whereas if you remember from the old Presidential Fitness Awards, it really focused on sportsmen, sports, athletics, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but what this is going to be is a little bit more towards health rather than just the athletic piece of it. So it's a lot of things, you know, there is that athletic piece, but it's also things that are, I don't know the exact specifications of it, but, and I think she was saying that they're hoping, there was a little issue that they were saying with the BMI, that they're trying to.
I'm hoping, I'm.
That they're hoping is not a part of it. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
So I, but I thought that was very.
Hoping to eliminate that.
Yeah, they're hoping to eliminate the BMI piece of it. But that was a very interesting piece that they're switching that over.
The interesting, the President's Physical Fitness has now included specific pull-ups and different, that we don't have the equipment for. And we could never afford the equipment in order for all the students to do it.
They're hard to do.
I think this makes more sense. And I'm frankly glad that, I know the nurses won't be happy with me saying this, but I'm glad that we're not going to be sending home the BMI reports anymore. It does too much damage to kids.
I agree.
We don't want that.
So that's, and then I'll let you discuss the other thing. So, I'm all done.
Okay, thank you. We'll go this way?
Policy.
Subcommittee policy, just want to announce it.
Oh, for the next one?
Yes.
Yeah, it's next Thursday morning at eight AM.
Okay.
At the Roman House.
All right, and did we have anybody over here?
We did. We had our first superintendent search subcommittee meeting yesterday with myself, Dr. Quick and Mr. Mullis. And we started discussing some different avenues that we could take. We do have a great resources, and Dr. Quick's friend, she came in to speak to us. She sits on the Waltham School Board and has recently gone through this process. So she's shared with us lots of her wisdom and some of the resources that they had at their disposal. So after hearing from her, we still have lots of questions and how to proceed and what we think is best for our community. So we are going to meet again on Thursday, October third, at noon at the Roman House. And we've invited Mike Gilbert to come back in and give us more information.
Okay, thank you. And I, CPAC, I was unable to make the first meeting they just had, but on Monday, this coming Monday, September thirtieth, they'll be having a welcome at six-thirty, some tea and cookies. And then they're having their first informative meeting. And I brought the wrong paper, but I think it's what, it was, did you have MJ, had you written that down?
I only received one email. And it pertains to the Basic Right Workshop.
Basically, it's the Basic Right Workshop on September thirtieth.
I'm sorry. It is September thirtieth, yes, at the Wilmington High School Library, seven PM.
Yeah, and they're having, they are having a little tea at six-thirty beforehand, if you'd like to come beforehand to meet people there. And they really, they're very informative and they're not, they're, you know, carefully, to the point, and they let you know things that we might not know at all. But I'll be reporting on it afterwards, but I'll definitely be to that one. And we also have, years ago, Joan Duffy, when she was Chair of the School Committee, and myself, put together a handbook for school committee members for Wilmington. And it's just an informative handbook, just like when we usually do what thing, what we're usually supposed to be going to, you know, graduation, et cetera. And so Mrs. Burns thought she might like to go through if somebody else would want to be helping her and see if there's anything that we don't have now. It hasn't been re-looked at because it was really just informally informative. I like that. So if anyone's interested and would like to, to go over it with MJ, please, could you just let her know? And I still have ones I can get to you. All right, we could do that. And I think, oh, November thirteenth.
November thirteenth has been established by the Selectment for Town Meeting to vote on the acquisition of land. That is our school committee meeting, so I need to know whether the school committee would like to meet earlier that evening at the middle school, or should we move the meeting to the following?
We can't do it. We can't do both.
Oh, that's right, you have town meeting, yeah, you can't do that. We have to remember that normally our second meeting comes before Thanksgiving, so we don't, we don't have it because it's usually the night before Thanksgiving. So we've got, I think we can't go the whole month without a meeting.
So we could do the following week, or that night at like, say, six, I think, at five-thirty? We've done that before.
Yeah.
What's your pleasure?
Or do we want to talk, think about it for the next meeting? Oh, because, oh, let me see. All right, we're here for the conference, tell me, the trouble is, okay, Wednesday, the sixth, we, three of us will be gone to the conference. So we can't have it that night. Thirteenth is town meeting, we can't have it that night. We could have it the twentieth.
I would do the twentieth, because I wouldn't be able to make a meeting that early, five-thirty.
Five-thirty, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a stretch for me.
Okay.
Possibly, but.
So do we think that Wednesday, the twentieth, because then that gives a whole week till Thanksgiving. You'll be able to cook. Mr. Mullis, we got to get his cooking. All right, does that work for you, Mrs. Benton?
Seven o'clock. Great.
There's also, the Technology Task Force meeting is also, is that October third as well? Yeah, so, a lot going on on October third.
Wow.
Are you going to have it?
I'll be there back to back.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so you both, who's on that, you know, you're done, good. Okay, excellent. All right, and, and we don't forget, we have October ninth and October twenty-third coming as regular meetings. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I forgot something. I'm sorry. Public comments. Do you have, okay. All right, Dr. Quick?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Broussard, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.